J.C. Infeld.
Here.
Rudy Davis.
Here.
Angela Berry.
Here.
Brenda Buenosera.
Here.
Wanda Schwer.
Here.
Lynn Reeves.
Laura Matalooney.
Here.
Have you had a chance to go over the agenda yet, everyone? Is there any additions or corrections? Stand motion for second agenda, Mr. President?
Summons.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
About the minutes, did everybody get a chance to peruse the minutes? Any additions or corrections?
Nope.
Move to accept the minutes?
Please.
Move to accept the minutes, that's right.
Been moved?
Second.
Second it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Discussion of the city, cities? That's fine. Number 10, right? That was like getting beat up, reading that. But it was so, it was extremely clear, of course. And we've gotten some feedback from somebody council. I would like, before we start, to get some comments from the city manager as to directly what the council wanted to pursue in reference to this.
You're talking 30, right?
Thirty.
Right.
Thirty is for today.
Thirty.
For you.
Yes.
Well, I heard you say 10, that's why I didn't wait.
Add 20.
Huh?
Add 20.
Okay, okay. Well, I went through and made some comments of my own, and then I got your comments, and some of the things that... You picked up on several things, there's a couple things I want to talk about, like... I'll pick the marina section that talks about the marina. It talks about abandoned boats, but it doesn't talk about abandoned lifts or other equipment that they might leave there. So, I think that that section would really be back there, you know, to clarify that. I think there needs to be some type of timeframe. When somebody abandoned something, or they don't keep their boat in the slip for, you know, because they took it out for maintenance. Well, you don't take it out for maintenance for six months. You take it out for maintenance for maybe 36 to 90 days. But I think there needs to be some kind of timeframe put in there. Because right now, it says 30 days, but then it talks about you can... If it's going to take longer, you can send a letter, but it doesn't say what that window is. Because we have one example of that happening now. Unfortunately, because COVID, he's out of the country. But that slip's been empty probably, what, 10 months at least, you know? So, but he's still paying for it. But he has a boat in. So, I don't know, I wanted to get some feedback on your thoughts on how to handle that. Even though the person's still paying for the spot, the marina's, you know, and then other people that are on the list see it and say, "Why can't I put my boat in there? There's not been a boat in the slip for, you know, X amount of months." So...
Is this a boat that's floating or hanging?
It's hanging. So, he's got a lift here without a boat. And then the other thing that I wanted some feedback on was, how do you make somebody take their lift when they do leave? You know, because that's an expense to the city. I just wanted to see what your thoughts were on that. Then, in section 3052, it says, "An applicant for a permit for a dock." To construct a dock, you need a permit. But I think we need to probably add some words and say, "Replace and/or repair." Because there is a requirement in the Landmark Conservation Code that says you have to get a permit for repair of a structure. So, and our code really says only construction, it doesn't say repair or replace. Maintenance of docks. And that's under 3053... It talks about maintenance and permits that shall be issued on the condition that this construction will remain a safe condition. That's an area where I think we need to add something that's to the effect that says if the dock is in disrepair, it should be brought into compliance within 30 days or some timeframe. Because that is an issue where people, their docks are in disrepair and they aren't fixed. So, I think we need a window that says, "You've got to do it within X amount of time."
Do we want to address and approve each of these issues now as we're talking about them?
If you want some highlights.
Well, how do you want us to handle that?
Well, I'm just going to give you my highlights, and then if we've got some discussion, we'll have some discussion about it.
My memory isn't that low, if we don't do it now, we can get it done. But you have to take your discussion, you want to have a down...
Do it now.
...offer.
Yeah, and you, you know, in your stuff that you built out, you provided some things that you've got a question about, as an example. So, I'm just picking out, you know, I haven't got a lot of things, but it's a few things that I thought was important that we addressed.
Okay. Your correction.
I was just going to make a comment.
Okay.
On 3053H, you mentioned is disrepair. Do we need more definition on the term "disrepair"? Whose opinion, who's making that call? I think, I think the Mad Beach specifications probably got a little more...
Detailed.
Detailed on that, and I kind of like what they said.
Where were you? I can't understand you.
On 3053... 3053H.
30H.
Yeah, I think both Angela and I quoted a lot of stuff from the Madeira Beach codes. And I think they're a lot more specific on just disrepair.
Yeah, I would agree that, but we need to look at that section to put something in there to get a little more teeth in it, to get it repaired. So, yeah, Madeira Beach had some things, maybe that's the wording we used.
Are we allowed to do verbatim what they put in theirs?
Yeah.
Because I thought that this whole Madeira Beach thing was a whole lot better than ours. Very specific, just...
Right.
And I think some of that, they have commercial docks and we don't. So, some of theirs is not really applicable to Beller Beach.
Right.
But the stuff that is applicable, I...
Was right on.
I played right along with it.
Yep.
Right. We're going to make that in the form of a...
It's in there. It was in the stuff that I put down, yeah.
Yeah, so... The area, and this has come up recently in section 30-144, number two, it talks about motorized vehicles on the beach. Is a battery-powered bicycle a motorized vehicle? So, I think that needs some clarity, because we've gotten, you know, these people are all of a sudden, they're riding battery-powered bicycles down the beach.
They're racing them around.
And people are, they're walking on the beach, evidently they're... We've had several complaints about that, that, you know, they're interfering with people walking on the beach. So, that is one clarification. And then the other thing that I talked about is the boat and stuff. So, those are the things that I thought were important. And I looked through what you submitted and, in general, and I'll be glad to answer those questions when we get to your comments.
Let's just continue on, Warner, with your situation, and we'll make the roundtable.
Okay, going back to the beginning, search area, so anchoring or mooring of watercraft. Again, if we've got restricted area, they're restricted in occupation. Who's monitoring that and are they being enforced now?
Well, we have, other than the sheriff's water patrol, that's all that we do. And there was something brought up at a council meeting about mainly the boats that are anchored across the bridge. You see a lot of...
I saw them.
Okay, but that's not in our jurisdiction. If you go to the top of the bridge and look down the waterway, those boats aren't in Beller Beach, they're in Beller Gloves or other areas.
There's one of the Eurotha styles that every now and then seems to get over into our site, but they never stay more than a couple of days, and then they go back to the other side.
Right. So, our code is pretty much, you know, there was some discussion, and I think we sent that to be Patty. Maybe we did. At the last council meeting, the consul brought up something that was... They asked for something, asked the city attorney, and he sent this out, it was Madeira Beach's code. And I did talk to Madeira Beach. And our code, really, our restrictions on 72 hours, that's what it is in Madeira Beach, okay? But they have to get a permit. Well, in talking to Madeira Beach, they don't have any way to go out and get them either. They don't have a boat that they could drive out, stop somebody. They basically said it's the sheriff's office or board of fish and wildlife. So, they may have a code, and our code pretty much says the same thing. But how do you enforce it? It's, you know, you don't have a boat, it's not enforceable.
So, where are, where is our line? Where?
Basically, if you take the top of the bridge, that's the very top, that's our jurisdiction of the line. And like I said, if you look on a regular basis, there's no boats in our jurisdiction. There might be one once in a while, like Wanda said, but there's not any. They're across the bridge, so that has really nothing to do with seeing Beller Beach. And if Beller Gloves wants to do something about it, I guess they can, but...
You're talking about the abandoned ones that are floating?
Yeah. See, I don't think it's, I guess my feeling is it's not really a problem. I don't know what you see, but in my mind, it's not a problem. It's not our problem.
Is we sending to hours a marine, whoever's in charge of the ocean, is that their rule, like you can't sit for more than 72 hours?
No, that's, that's just been written in the code. Like ours says, you can't more unattended boat, watercraft of any waterway within the city for 72 hours or more in a 30-day period. It's kind of like using an RV. You can't park an RV in your driveway over 24 hours. You can't do it 24, take it away for 24, bring it back for 24. You've got to wait, I think it's eight days or something.
So, it's not like a Coast Guard regulation, that they can only be out there for 72 hours?
No.
So, do you have any pertinent state statutes?
No. Not that I know of.
Well, if somebody did park their boat out there for longer than 72 hours, it would be a problem, maybe for some homeowner. So, you might not want to get rid of it?
No, no, I'm not saying get rid of it. What I'm saying is, the, our code already covers it.
So, we don't need to dwell?
We don't need to change it, it already covers it. But the question was...
Who monitors it?
Who monitors it? And that would be the sheriff, and I don't know how much monitoring that's done, because the marine patrol. And it's no different than what Madeira Beach does. How do you... They don't have a boat, so they have no way of going out there and enforcing their own rule. Nor do we. But I guess if we came a problem, then we could contact the sheriff, have them go deal with it. You know, if we saw a problem that continues.
As we come along.
Right, but we haven't seen that problem, not on this side. Now, there's half a dozen boats over there, they're sitting there all the time, you know? But that's not Beller Beach, that's Beller Gloves.
So, I, this is just an aside to keep in mind. I went to a conference recently, and they were talking about human trafficking, and that's one of the modes that they're using now, is to go into nice communities and put these young women on boats and children.
Yeah.
And come down the waterway.
I'm going to recognize Marvin, he's about to have a sit back.
Yeah, some of the problems that were in my mind were improper angling. If the boat's going to be sitting out there a month, and if it's not properly anchored, you get a good wind coming up, it could go into one of our homes or the docks. The other thing is, is there anybody monitoring the come-out? You know, is it full? Is the boat seaworthy? Those are many things.
Okay.
Or is the boat insured? If it's going to be moored in our area, and it does break loose, do they have a proper insurance? If it does break loose, do they pay for it or not for any other damage that they do? Or do they have salvage insurance? So, if the boat sinks in our waterways, is that going to be removed? Is that our problem, I'm saying?
Or is that, is the Coast Guard?
It's the Coast Guard.
That's the Coast Guard or Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, Fiona, continue on, Warner.
Okay, just in general, on the docks part of portions and divots, there was a section, I think I pulled from, again, Mad Beach, on construction repair operations are raised to conform to provisions of Article 1. It's unlawful to build, destroy, repair, raise or alter, you see bulkhead, bulkhead, growing dock, jetty are part thereof, any projections or prolongations thereof in the city without conforming and prescribing for the provisions of this article. So, that sort of takes in your whole maintenance, you know? Don't do anything unless you're, and this may not even be sufficient wording.
Right. The wording would view to the terms.
Well, and I think that just kind of covers your whole thing, but I think that maybe they should be even a little more pointed than that. And then you get down into the section on removal of residue tools and equipment. Again, I looked at that, and I thought, well, maybe if you've got commercial boats, or you've got the commercial fishing thing out there, like they do in Madeira Beach, they probably have more trouble with this than we do. But still, you get people who are tinkering around with their boats, they leave stuff laying around on their docks. So, there you get into debris, residue tools and equipment. So, maybe we want something in there that says, "Don't leave anything laying around." Or letting it get blown over into the waterways. And then going on to plans and specifications, 30-52. There was a lot in 30-52 and chapter 30, and all that seemed to not quite duplicate chapter 94. And I'm wondering if maybe there should be some more consolidation of the wording on that. Maybe put a little more of the teeth from 94 into 30, and then just reference to the other section. So that somebody might read something in one section, but don't go to the other section and read the more detailed one, and say, "But I'm complying with this, but you're not complying with that."
Right.
And then the question I think Angela brought up as well about covered boathouses. And I know, we don't have any of those here, do we?
No.
And they're not allowed.
They're, yeah, they're prohibited. That would be considered an accessory obstruction.
And then in 3053, on construction, our wording, again, this back in maintenance, saying, "We'll be maintained in safe condition at all times, a little vague." So, I pulled the section out of Mad Beach. Basically said that the city manager, this designated representative, may determine that a pair, or dock has become dangerous, and without notice thereof shall be... A written notice shall be given by mail, any party so informed shall have 30 days permission to remove or repair such structure, conform. I think, and then that's what you were suggesting as well.
Right, you know, out of maintenance, kind of reworded.
Not speaking?
Huh? Yeah, because it's not, it's not very clear, you know? The way it's written, it sounds more like it's just...
Too casual?
Too casual, too, I guess I would call it. Vague, that's a better word. It's more vague.
And then I also thought that the enforcement duties of city manager that I pulled out of Mad Beach was a little more definitive, and maybe that was something we could adopt as well. And then when you get into Division 3, you see walls, bulkheads and retaining walls. I thought this would be a decent place to reference that Seawall handbook on construction and compliance and maintenance, rather than copy the whole thing. Those were my points. Colored with oil, I just wanted to say, Rudy, I think you wrote our final report already.
I suppose that I can hold a vote, if it's valid. I move that we support all of those, those requests you made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Specifically from the city manager? It's a matter of not speaking.
No.
As far as you're concerned?
Yeah.
You read both as well.
Right.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Opposed? So carry. That Patty can be noted. Thank you, Warner. Now, Rudy, we'll go with your situation. I'll keep it.
Fabio. I read this, and me, as I keep reading and reading and cleaning up some of the language is fine, but as I wrote, to me, it's really a matter of how, what an advocate the city wants to be for strict code enforcement. Because you start talking about strictly enforcing all these codes, you're talking dollars, big dollars. So, that's really not our burden. City needs to decide how strict it wants to be, and how much it wants to spend on enforcement. And when you start talking about enforcement, you have to have a real expertise of someone who can go and look at a dock, a seawall, and know proper methods for determining how structurally sound they are. For instance, I just went through the whole process of evaluating and repairing my complete seawall. We used Ruth Larson's...
Yeah.
It was a $300 charge for him to come out and give us a detailed report on the status of our seawall, and what repairs should be made or didn't need to be made. It's still a $25,000 investment, recapping, and I didn't replace or face. I just did a cap replacement, tiebacks and drain application. So, it's, with the number of seawalls and the age of the seawalls, we start enforcing those strictly, and I really think we should. There's going to be a large appetite for people, once they understand they've got to spend at a minimum, I want to say $20,000. Two, I think my high bid on a complete job was like $35,000. So, that's a significant investment. But if they don't do it, and it's allowed to, but then in the end, they create a problem for that piece of property, property's on the site. So, again, to me, yeah, we can go by and look through and look at each of these codes, but the bigger question, which we pointed out to council, that it's a matter of how much money they want to spend, and how strict they want to be, and you have the people. Because you go tell somebody they need to spend $20,000 to $30,000, and they're going to want to know that that person is an expert and a recognized authority or an engineer in that particular business. It may be a requirement, if we look at, there'd be a requirement that... I used to, if one was pointing out, if you're getting ready to sell a piece of property, that it have a report prior to certified engineer approved by the city before you sell that property, you've got to have it in there. If you're on water, the status of your seawall. So, if there's a new person coming in who's got this engineering board, be safe, this has got to be them. That may be another issue or an item that we could put in. So, my thoughts are there. The only thing I really found housekeeping wise is on 9417, 30-190D. Our last sentence, or line is caused or related to use of his work, I think it should be there for his heart.
Did you say 190 or 192?
It's 30-191, the last line indeed. And then it's somewhere just put there for...
Okay.
Patty, you can recommend that to talk, or get to... That's...
I don't know if describing her sentence, thank you.
Oski. Sure.
Thank you very much. And the chair, I agree that we're not in a position to say we're going to enforce or ask the city to enforce, or create debates to enforce something like this. I don't think it's our jurisdiction or the board to do that.
No, they're just looking for recommendations.
Can't hear you.
They're looking for recommendations. I will say Rudy's comment, maybe that's something that we need to do with... When they, as we get lead searches and code compliance on every outside, maybe that is something we need to put in our code that says... we need to put in our code that says, "You're going to have to provide something, you know, some kind of inspection that says that seawall's okay," because that's what happened to that house on Bay Shore. We went for a code inspection, saw a bulging of the seawall, and notified the code people that it was bulging and that he probably had an inspection, unfortunately before the house sold, seawall fell away.
Isn't that, if you give a house inspection, isn't that part of it if it's on the water?
We, no, no, we do it as a, our code enforcement person would do that, but, you know, if, actually, I was the one that did the code inspection on that house, because our code guy wasn't here that day, and I said, "I'm going to do it." Well, I saw the seawall bulging, so I made a note of the code thing, but realistically, I'm not an engineer, it's, you know, I could have said, "Oh, that's, just because it's bulging, it don't mean anything." And I assure you that the deputy will be caught, because he, you know, he's not going to probably look at that when he goes out there. He's going to just look at, you know, is their fence falling down? Is there... He wouldn't have caught that. But I think that might be a good idea to put something in the code that says, "Upon the sale of a house, you have to certify that that seawall is..."
When we were buying our house twenty-one years ago, how we're looking, because Ron knew to ask for that, we asked our inspector to look at the seawall, and he said that it was, that it needed to be replaced. So we wrote that contingency into ourselves contract, and the seller paid half of the cost. But we had a good seller. That doesn't mean that everybody's going to work that way, but I think having, having something like that is reassuring to the buyer and might actually be an enhancement to our property values.
Right.
Then you can add dock to it, house has a dock.
Yeah.
But the dock's truly the issue you don't see until there's a problem is what is the internal health and well-being of the pilots? Because there by worms and bores that come in from the soil, you don't really know that status until it's hit by heavy waves and not covered. You find the entire center of the pole is rotten and eaten out. How do you expect for that? It's not a high thing. You have to know what you're doing to top that.
Right.
I would entertain a motion that this committee recommends this addendum be placed somewhere in the code called sale of property at an inspection we made in the dock and seawall. Turn to the city attorney to word it.
Yeah.
Require certified engineer.
Yeah.
Because again, you're telling somebody they're going to spend a huge amount of money, I think, at least a couple of...
Some certification.
Sure. Provide the appropriate people.
Well, I would say a certified engineer.
And just as, just as an argument, if this is, we made the city council, I think that would be totally in compliance with our strategic plan.
Right.
It actually enhances the value of...
The property.
The property and the services that the city provides to our, to our residents and to our buyers.
I would entertain that motion.
I second that motion.
All those in favor? Or is there any further discussion?
Well, I think first we probably should, if that needs to be precisely worded.
Yes, I understand.
Get that done and bring it back.
Yeah.
But let's say a motion, we do have that written up.
Yes.
Okay. Will I second that? For us, the city manager to have that written up so we can look at it later, be, if I'm in favor of that motion.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Lynn, you'll handle that, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Simple, succinct, succinct. Thank you, Patty. Angela?
So one of them really covered most of the ones that I had, but as far as, I think, I guess I just had some questions. Again, I agree about an engineer on thirty dash fifty-three, Madeira Beach, talks about a city manager or designee for specification of docks, and it just seems to me, again, that, you know, if the city manager isn't an engineer, somebody with that expertise needs to be looking at the docks and seawalls.
Well, I know when I went to build my dock, and I had to get a permit, and it had to be certified and everything else, that's all taken care of when you...
Right, that's why I said I didn't know if we needed to include the wording engineer.
It didn't look, I didn't spot anything. It was succinct when I went through it.
But the, okay, because again, the Madeira Beach one that we were referring to, that we were going to adopt, said that upon determination by the city manager...
Or this, which should be an engineer.
Okay, so that's how we're...
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it is permitted. Anything else, Angela?
We talked about the docked houses, we don't have any of those. And is thirty days enough time to make the repairs to a seawall or dock?
No, absolutely not.
Yeah.
You won't even get them out there.
Right.
They're going to be three months now.
So the thirty days really shouldn't say they have thirty days to repair it, they have a thirty day to get an assessment.
Yeah, I think that's probably what you should do on assessment, is you can get those, it's just you're not going to get them to do anything.
Right.
Housekeeping.
Probably get work. Yeah.
You can handle that internally, then?
Huh?
You can handle that internally.
And then there was wording about periodically inspecting the existence and condition of all seawall, bulkheads, grines, piles, pile on. And that just seems like a huge task, and I guess speaking to what you had brought up, Rudy, how much money does the city want to spend on people going around? And how often? What does periodically mean? Just when there's a problem or is it not a year?
That's usually what happens up. You don't want to create problems.
Well, I don't think the city's ever really done that, except in the last year, we kind of done it.
Maybe that once a year should be at the end of hurricane season.
Yeah.
Because that's when the problems occur, when the storms come.
Right. Yeah, now, we do, you know, if there's a hurricane, of course, you know, there is a, even county has some damage assessment, people that live on the waterways and stuff, but our only way to see that damage is from the front, because we don't have any, unless, you know, we're on like Hibiscus or something. But like this year, Constable Gaddis took us out to boat and docked it, and we can get the sheriff to do that on a routine basis, and they will do that for us. They'll take somebody out, do what we ask them. Part of the problem with that is their boat and even Constable Gaddis' boat, you can't get that close to that seawall, so you may not see everything, you know, because it's a, because of the depth of the water in some places.
Our boat has a shallower draft.
Huh?
Our boat has a shallower draft.
Yeah, but, but an example like down here, I mean, to get a boat out, it better be high tide, because you're not going anywhere just in the town, and you have to be very careful.
That's common place that we're around us, yeah.
Right, so...
Time and tide.
I would just be careful about adopting the wording that Madeira Beach has, you know, verbatim, because again, it talks about that's the city manager's responsibility, and you'll periodically do it, and I don't see how you could do that with everything else you have to do.
Well, it would be somebody else doing it, it wouldn't be me, it would be whoever does things do it. But what is periodically, that's the question, and there again, to Rudy's point about, how much money do you want to spend on this?
That's right.
You know, the city doesn't have a boat, so with the mercy of either the sheriff or a resident that volunteers, or we're in a boat.
Well, how many seawalls are in disrepair right now?
With any cars needing oil change?
Well, what I call...
Oh, I mean, you can...
There really isn't a problem on the beach, that's the thing. It's more cosmetic than the seawall being crashed, you know, it's, and some of them we find with, you know, somebody will call and say, "Hey, I've got a..." They'll think it's a stormwater pipe that's leaking and causing an indentation in the backyard. Well, come to find out, it's your seawall.
Yeah.
You know, and that happened recently. So when we did the thing a couple of months ago, we identified, I think it was twenty-eight or something like that, and those were things like docks and seawalls, but most of it was cosmetic, like their cap is broken off, or there's metal exposure, or there's a chip out of the thing. For the most part, that's what was wrong. The seawall itself, you know, it didn't appear that there was much damage to any of them. It's just some people need to repair their cap. And that may be, seawall's fine, maybe they need to put new tiebacks in and report the cap. So it's not, I would say it's a huge problem.
And here, when you see a cap, that's what they call spalling, where the concrete is breaking off in sections, that's usually a good indication that there's more going on.
Right.
But what's breaking that cap is the rusting of the rebar that's within the concrete. And a lot of that is started by the wall itself is starting to shift, and that's also could be causing the cap to break off, actually break off in that, so if the cap is falling, to me, that's time for further inspection of the seawall.
Right.
And we go so far as to say, if that's, if you have a cap that's breaking apart, you're now required by the city, you have an inspection done, so that we have a certified engineer to have that inspection done, so you truly note the status of that wall.
And that's, that's what we were asking for, to put something in the code that made a requirement, because, you know, if you're not Ruth Larson, I can't tell you, just because your seawall's cracking, or your cap's cracking, I can't tell you your seawall's cracked.
Right, that's, again, that was the reason for maybe we need to add the language about an engineer, and you won't be the one who's having to get out in the building and go, "Look at all these seawalls."
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't hire an engineer to go and try and look at seawalls, but if we found one and we gave a courtesy notice to that person, then if there's something in the code that says, "We've notified you that you have a problem here," okay, so now you need to certify to us that your seawall is okay.
Are either of the engineering companies that we have on retainer, are they certified to look at seawalls and docks and things to have a certification?
They're, for the most part, they're not that type of engineers. They're not a marine engineer, they're, you know...
And they don't have any on staff?
No, most of them are infrastructure, what I call infrastructure engineers, because they don't do that. I mean, I will say in Nellis County, you either use Ruth, and then there's a guy that works with him, John Adams, I don't, I don't know of a bunch of seawall engineers that that's what they focus on in Nellis County. And Rudy, you, you, did you, when you did yours, did you go find another engineer to look at it, or?
Did you just use Ruth, not just you, Ruth?
Yeah.
But I, from the time when we, when I was mayor, you did Harrison, and I think he was twenty-second, he was the consulting engineer for that part.
Right. Yeah, see, there's not a lot of those that focus specifically on seawall. Now, the seawall companies, if you look at the documents that they bring in to us for a permit, I'd say ninety-five percent of them are Ruth Larson or John, one of the two. They are named by else or, yes, it would be found a lot of people who do that type of work. But I do feel that, you know, if we tell somebody through a courtesy notice, that at some point, they need to get a certification. Now, if it's just, to me, a little cosmetic, a little piece of, chunks of concrete, or maybe a, I don't know, I guess a oak and nickel, it's some damage, well, that's a different story. I'm talking about, you start seeing metal, stuff like that. Then, then I think they need to certify that that seawall is safe.
Okay. And then the, I guess, just really quick, the other ones were, do we have any concrete block construction seawalls?
None that I know of.
Because Madeira said that if they had concrete blocks, you could...
And I've never seen them.
Oh, no, no, years ago, they, they did that, but I haven't, I don't know of any. I haven't seen anything like that for a long time.
So we don't need to use that in ours? And then there's an article for, I guess, for the beach, is that number seven, the tents, cabanas, canopies, umbrellas, that you can use them? We were told you couldn't use them.
No, you can use them in Beller Beach, but you can't leave them overnight.
So you can use them?
Yeah.
But not in Beller Shore.
That's Beller Shore, which is from Nineteenth to First Street.
Okay.
Yeah, no, ours, we don't have any of the street.
All right, Doc?
Plus, everything's been addressed again? Plus, everything's been addressed here again? I love this.
Yes.
This is understandable. I could even figure it out, so this would get it somehow, we've already discussed that. Not, not in particular, some tricky little thing that I don't even need to be brought up now, that's it.
Okay. I also, we were, presented a slight guideline by one of the city council members. Lauren presented this to me just before, they said that the, and as we're trying to do with this motion too, is the basic seawall inspection points, sinkholes, slag joints, hyperstatic pressure, which is the drains. I've watched mine, when there's a pouring rain, if you get out and your dock and watch all the water run out, that's a good sign. And it's very, this, who wrote this, took pictures, did a hell of a job. And if you see a crack in your cap, et cetera, these are the basic inspections that could be, could be made, but if you write that, present it, Patty shoots it to us in an email so we can take a look at it and, or subtract. to us in an email so we can take a look at it and, or subtract it, whatever you come up with, then it'll be appreciated.
You want to give that to Lynn and add in to...
Sure. I'm sure you've got one piece from Melvin.
Of course.
Um, I don't think you can read that.
Well, I'll get it just a...
He lied to me.
Yes, he did.
Okay.
He lied to me.
Same one.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
You made me confused. Go ahead.
All right. And I'd just like to go back a little bit to section 3053.
And here do you...
Go back to section 3053, section F. I had some experience here to go. I had a new dock put in, 2001. According to the codes, they used galvanized. In some areas, they used ceramic coated and others. After seven years, they were gone and it was due to a chemical reaction on the wood dock. And the wood understructure, main structure of the dock, and a chemical reaction between the galvanized, the acid, and the seawall, and I had to have the whole dock re-screwed, probably after, seven years after having it detected.
Me too.
So I think it was very smart to do a little investigation and maybe eliminate the galvanized screws in that section.
I would, Rudy. I am all stainless when I did my dock. The maintenance cost was not that much.
Yeah, on those really places, anything's stainless.
So you're saying to leave hot dip galvanized, basically?
To remove hot dip galvanized. Say aluminum brass stainless steel.
Right.
We could make a motion and I'll undertake a motion for that observation.
I'm moved.
Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Off the record, I did the same thing with mine. Stainless steel. Screwed.
Yeah. It's saving the money in the long run.
Absolutely. Any other, that's which section we go to next, Rudy? What's our next law?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four and out?
Ninety-four and out.
Lynn, is there anything in particular in ninety-four you wanted us to focus on? Because this is, I remember this one.
We spent a lot of time on this. Uh, I've got a couple of things in my other notes that I'll probably bring to the next.
Can you shoot an email to each of us, please, on that? Just for feeling?
Because really, like the sections about, you know, we went through and did all this detached building, these things of that nature. We've already been through it, uh, two years ago. Uh, setbacks and none of that, I don't, that's towards the end of it. I don't think we're going to have. So what I'll do, I'll, I've got some notes that I brought up, mainly, uh, let me see if I've got, uh, there's a couple of things that I want to, they were from one code at the end, and I want to make sure they look the same.
Just being clear here, you're talking...
Uh...
It's very...
Just looking to see if I've got it this far.
Come on, Doc, you're suggesting that maybe we don't need to really peruse it if he has something going on?
Well, there's something to focus on because...
Yes.
We, we spent probably two weeks on this last time.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of discussion.
Let, let me send you an email with a couple of things that we should focus on. For the most part, it's not, most of this is, is cut and dry. It's, it's more about the bill we go with, system structure. And, and we did go in pretty good detail. So I'll send you an email, I think, with any things that I would focus on. But I wouldn't spend a lot of time after, uh, let's see.
All right. Any unfinished business that anyone can think of, that they would like to bring up? It's on this board.
So last week, I mean, last time we met, we had a discussion about garbage being left out on the side of the road.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know that we ever really came to an agreement about what to do other than, you know, we would report it. And as, I, that's a health and safety issue, you know, trash and brings varnits and whatever. And I was just curious about what we could do to remedy that situation if somebody was leaving town and they didn't have a neighbor to put their trash out. And I had a thought, is there any way they could bring it here and put it in the bin? Like if they notified you they were going out of town, could they drop it off?
Well, they could put it in the dumpster, but...
That's what I mean.
But, uh, I, I think we have to discuss the fact that it needs to be put in a trashcan.
I think that needs to be enforced.
Yeah. It's gotta be in a trashcan.
So it's okay as long as it's in a trashcan?
Yeah. It's gotta be in a trashcan with a lid on it, which is, which is out there. The other issue is because of the way our recycling is done, uh, if, if it's recycling material, maybe we've got to be more clear about it's got to be in the recycling container. You can't just leave it on the street. I don't know.
See, I didn't think you could leave your can on the street and bring it back.
Well, you're not supposed to. But we need to get clarity to that that says, okay, you can put your trashcan out at, uh, five o'clock the night before or the thing. You can't...
I'm sure it was in your code somewhere.
I've looked and...
I, I, I thought it was people who were going out of town and weren't coming back for a long period of time. Those are the folks I was talking about.
Well, that, that's, that's who's causing this problem, if they...
Right. I just wondered if it was allowed for them to bring it here and drop it off?
Well, they, they could put it in the dumpster, but technically, they aren't supposed to use it. They, somebody might consider that a dump, which, but I don't think we, in the case of the one, uh, where they just left it on the lawn like that, if I look at that, it looks like it's mostly recycled.
Well, you know what? The recycle guys picked up everything, even the five plastic garbage bags with the food straps in it. The recycle guys took it all.
But I guess what I'm saying is they shouldn't just leave it on the ground. They should put it in the recycling container. Maybe that's what we've got to add to the code that says it's got to be in a recycling container. Because basically, what this person did, they didn't break anything down. They just went out there and threw their empty boxes out inside the road in this picture. That's what they did. And, you know, if you're recycling it, that's fine and handy, but you can't just throw it out like that.
Is it just, does, would something like that have to be put in the code?
Right. It does.
It really does? Or can't be put out?
Yeah. Because, as an example, uh, our code says all garbage has to be in a covered container. Okay? Now, and that's in the code. It has to be there because before people would throw out, you know, their garbage without a lid on it or anything, and then it flows down the street. Now, the code doesn't say that you can't put vegetation out in a, in a can without a lid, because, I mean, I'm guilty of that myself. I put it in the trashcan.
My palm fronds would fit the game.
Huh?
My palm fronds would fit the game.
Yeah. But it says the vegetation has to be cut by a contract of, of four feet. And it's supposed to be bundled, but our, our trash collector doesn't require you to put a string around it, bundle it.
They don't want it. No.
They're good about that. But the, the problem with a situation like this is they basically just took their empty boxes out of the garage and threw them out of the street. Well, they shouldn't be put in some kind of container. If you're, if you're talking recycling, then yes, it needs to be in a recycling bin.
If you look at that too, there's five garbage bags there.
Yeah. You don't know what's in them, but...
No, but the dogs do.
Huh?
The dogs do.
Okay. But there again, you don't put your garbage on the ground. And our code is, says that. But our code doesn't specifically say, you know, recycling material has to be in a recycling bin. I guess we need to change that to clarify that.
Would you like to work something like that in your...
Well, it's just adding to what the, we're, we're in the code and I don't remember exactly what's that, you or...
In Lynn's, no.
Huh?
No.
You know, we'll, we just need to change that section of the code that says it's got to be in a container. It cannot be left out on the street. Recycling has got to be put in there.
Do you have a section?
Such a number of... Huh?
Such a number of...
It's got to be under ten.
Is it ten? I can't remember. It says, I know it says the lid. So we just need to add, add that stipulation. And along with that is saying your can needs to be returned to your, or can't be put out before X time.
Ten dash seventy-four twelve.
Is that what it is?
Ten dash seventy-four twelve.
Okay. So what needs to be put in there is your can cannot be put out before X time the day before, because this is a good example of someone that, uh, probably, who knows when they put it out? I don't know.
What was it?
Ten dash seventy-four twelve. One of our contracts used to say that the waste management or whoever was, the provider was, would actually come up into your driveway to get your can, into the trash, and then bring it back up. Does that go longer in the contracts? They've never done it.
Well, they, there was a list of people, but because how it was out there was the fact that you had to have some kind of debilitating, that they would go up to your house and bring your can back. Okay? But over time, this list of people got to be people that, I don't know how it ended up that, and, and we re-looked at that list, and now it's down to about, what, seven or eight houses. It's not many houses anymore, because that was, that isn't in the contract. They just carried over. You know, we used to have what we called side door pickup. And that was more for people that had, you know, maybe, uh, somebody that's a hundred years old, they just got...
We have a few of those.
Huh?
We have a few of those.
Okay.
We do.
But then it got to be, people started getting put on the list that...
Just lazy.
That, that's very true. And they shouldn't be on that list. And we shrunk that list because we went, or the house sold and somebody else moved into it. So we did a survey in the city and found out that, well, these people weren't having side door pickup, but they were on the list because it was the new homeowner and just putting it out in the street like everybody else. So they got taken off the list. But we've still got a couple of people that really shouldn't be on that list. But...
Well, I don't want to reinvent everything, but...
No, but...
Why don't you just...
We just need to add where it talks about the...
Can you add this to your email, the bullet points that you want?
Yeah. We can, we can just add that to the same section where it talks about the...
Why sure.
You know? And then, right here, uh, section 12, we just need to add that the trash cannot be put out till X time the day before the crash, and it needs to be brought back to the house. Then there's an enforcement there, then we can say to people, your garbage can was left out. And, you know...
Also, at the point about recycling materials should be in containers. Add a point there about the recycling materials should be in a container as well.
In a container, in the recycling bins. Yeah. So that's, that's a simple fix. But I think we do need to put a time in there.
Your point to Andy Blundes about people going out of town and needing to leave their trash out, they're going to be gone for a while, seems like to me we could have something set up in the city that they called in, um, the city staff and say, I'm leaving, they want a one-time pickup at the side of the house or wherever their garbage stands are. And we notify waste management at that house, so one time needs to go pick up their trash so it's not left on the street overnight or something.
That's something I need, probably would ask, have to ask waste management.
If they can do that...
Are either of them going to do it before they go out? I mean, notify you that they're going to do it?
Well, this, I think this particular one, this is a recurring...
Yeah, because they don't come on the, they'll come on the weekend, put their trash out, go back to Tampa for a few more days and come back the next weekend.
So this isn't, so it comes once every six months?
No, these, these, these folks come back and forth several times.
Well, that's just wrong. You know, that's just wrong. But, you know...
Well, again, we're just talking about one situation and...
Yeah. But if we put something in there that, we can give them a code violation that says, first of all, if, if, if that white bag was garbage, they've already got a code violation.
Wow.
Because they didn't do what the code said in, in 12. They didn't have a, a container with a lid on it. But they, you know, that's, they've already got a code violation, you know, if it's garbage. And I know if we gave them a courtesy, I don't remember if you or, did we give them a courtesy notice?
That?
Yeah.
Continue.
Did the ninety-nine, the truck pickup, or the, or the notice was...
But we didn't give them a notice to, to, to tell them. You got to tell people regardless if it's gone after the fact.
Well, people won't read the code. But when, I know every month, the city sends out this email to everybody. Can there be a little identity put in there also?
Yeah. People...
That seems abusive.
Yeah, we just updated the...
Notification.
Yeah. And because people, even, okay, we got this notice and it wasn't there, we probably should have at least put a courtesy notice on the door that said, you had trash in your thing, you left it out, and you didn't meet the code that says you've got to have a lid on the trashcan. Now, we need to add to that code that says it's got to be in a recycling bin. Uh, and then, you know, we've got this code brochure. We update that periodically, and maybe what we've got to do is that's going to be part of the email that we send out. You know? It's kind of like, uh, the fire department said something to me about not having addresses on your house. Okay? And I think somebody brought that up.
Here.
So now we're going to have to make some kind of effort that says, hey, and that's going to be a lot of houses, because they, they don't have a number on the front of their house, even though the code said you got them.
It's in the code.
Huh?
It's in the code, isn't it?
Right. But there's a lot of people...
It's in our brochure.
Yeah. And it's in the brochure that you have to have an address on the front of your house. Well, there's a lot of houses that don't have an address on the front of their house.
That should be in the code, you're saying?
No, it's in the code.
It's in the code.
Yeah.
But they see that, that other people don't do it, so they think they don't have to do so.
Right.
But is that something you, you might arrange for me to start in the courtesy notices to those processes?
No, we're going to send, because that would be every day. You'd be doing that for months, because there's that many of them. So we're, we're just going to have to do what we did again. After we get through this process, we'll take this brochure and rebuild it a little bit, like we did last time. We mailed that to all the homeowners again to remind them that, hey, you need to fix your stuff. And occasionally, we're going to hit some of those. Maybe one day a month, that's all we do is... those, maybe, one day a month, that's all we do, is give courtesy notices to people without an address on their house, something like that.
Well, then you don't have to let us hear.
Yeah, that's a good point, but, yeah. So, we'll need to edit that section in ten, Patty, so put that in your notes. To add recycling and to add a time, the can can be out and it must be removed. Go back, you know, maybe it's five o'clock on, just say, five P M. the day before, and once the can's emptied, it's got to be brought back to the house or something, to that picture.
Unless they're working and they can't get it back till they get home?
Well, that's why I'm saying, if you put the can out of it, the, the problem is, there's nothing in our code that says what time that can can go out to the street, and what time it should be retrieved on the day of trash, by the end of the, the day or something. I don't know how you do that.
I was going to say, you might want to put some wording in there for yard waste, because a lot of people will do their, trim their palm trees and stuff over the weekend and start kind of, that's what we do, you know? We'll do all the work on Saturday and pile it up at the edge, so, but that should be okay, right? And the, and the bags with the grass clippings and things?
Right, but what I'm talking about more is trash, or something like that.
Well, that's why I'm saying we might need to make a little distinction there, so people don't think they've got to wait until five o'clock on Sunday to put the trash, put the yard clippings down.
Well, that's why I say it's for trash can.
Talking about garbage.
For the garbage, for the garbage, not necessarily anything else. It's just garbage that's the issue with, and, and it needs to be, the, the day of the trash, it needs to be retrieved from the front of the house by the end of the, the day, on trash day. That's really what it needs to say. And then, we can say, if, if this person left a trash can out, it's Tuesday, well, trash is over the day before, so then we can say to them...
Why don't everybody on this board come up with a suggestion, and we'll discuss it next week? In reference with what the city manager comes up with, Laura.
Okay. I think that's it.
Yes? Melvin?
I think there's some problem with the landscapers on Friday. They'll cut trees or prawns off palm trees, leave it sit, and that'll sit there until Monday. But the other thought I had, maybe once a month, do a sweep, the last week of the month, any garbage cans left out at four o'clock on Friday, or recycled bins, get picked up, and they can find them at city halls. And actually, when they don't have garbage cans, they'll...
I think this board's going to clean up sick.
I think we can say, oh, I see. How much money does he want to spend to go collect garbage?
We're getting on a hand.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't have the staff to do that, I can tell you that.
Yeah. Anything else on your unfinished business with the board? We have finished citizens' comments, we have the inspector here.
I'm Dan Doran, just wanted to come and introduce myself, and if I have any questions, I'd first have to answer or discuss. It's popular, so just send a lot of...
Thank you very much for attending. Appreciate that.
My name's Frank Becker.
Jay?
I'm running for city council. I'm interested in promoting yourself, everybody. From that recycling issue, there's a great recycling place right at Twenty Eighth Street with Indian Rocks Beach, where recyclables, there's cardboard, it's right across the city wall of Indian Rocks Beach. It's actually a waste management site where they use these places, rotting garbage is all another issue. I hope you guys keep in mind, these landscapers, when they do cut down palms and all like that, they're limited to one day a week, you know, that they're doing this, so I think the neighbor would get quite upset. The citizens here, he said you can't, palm branches out till one in the morning, Thursday morning. But anyway, I've been knocking on doors, I've probably hit about four hundred doors in the last week or so. I'm leaving flyers, and I'm not getting, I'm not littering, officers are on lock. But I just wanted to say hello. I think you guys do a great job here, I think we live like in ruins in heaven. At least keep it that way.
And for God's sake. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you guys, great city manager, it's a great paper.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else coming for the board? I'll call for the adjournment.
Someone to attend to?
Any in favor? Bye.
That was the fourth ambulance that just came over.
Adjourn.
The fourth.
Say you want...